Flying the electronic speed.
Yeah.
All right, it's nine o'clock, please, you're on the place.
I think we're gonna wait on the minutes.
Okay.
What's that?
We're gonna wait on the minutes as she's getting the other.
Okay, that's fine.
Mr. Bailey, you're up then. How are you?
That was on my desk, Eric, I don't know what to do. Something about some pipeline, I don't think it affects us.
Okay, safety guy, all right. Start off with permit for Melvin McFarlane on an extension at 1048 240th. Okay, just one.
Make a motion to approve an extension on the Culver at 1048 240th Street as submitted by Commissioner or Public Works Director Bailey.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Just FYI, Thomas Query, removing overburden down there. Somebody did run through the gate over the weekend. We've got it fixed and put back, so just, you know, in case you hear anything on that, I think it's happened once before or something. So anyhow, we done reports.
It's gotta be hard on the vehicle.
Absolutely, they left the front light and what have you there for headlight for us, so, but anyhow, grill and what have you, so they hit pretty hard. Commissioner Harris, you asked way back when you came on, on Birch Road, east of Highway 3, kinda what the plan was there.
Yes.
Meeting with John George this Thursday at around nine o'clock to look at that. He's got an idea for us to get a crossroad tube that's collapsed, put in, get the water draining to the south where its natural flow goes, which will cut down on the erosion in the ditch, which is what, three foot or so deep or?
Yeah.
It's deep.
Yeah, and it's been fixed, but it's coming back unless you make changes.
Yeah, so.
Good, thank you.
That will be, we'll get to moving forward with.
Good, thank you.
Project. Yell Road, large patch jobs are completed, there's a few small ones that we have to go back and do with the pothole patcher, so that kinda gives you update with that, and then we'll look at getting started with reclaiming the asphalt from the west entrance, west to where it was left off before. Employees ask, and I don't know, they're asking me, and I don't know the answer to this, what longevity pay, is there any talk on that or not, or do you know yet, or that's?
You budgeted for it, didn't you?
I don't remember, I don't think so. I don't know if we did or not, I'll have to look.
I'll tell them that you guys are looking into it.
Didn't ring a bell right at the moment.
It does me, because I was sitting there at the time we budgeted for, but, my opinion, but we better research it.
My wife asked Susan because she was a.
Researching.
See if we run the figures on that, we're gonna ask one later on.
Purple Wave, I have a couple items I'd like to Purple Wave, one's a 2008 Sterling, one's a 1996 Ford, it was the old bridge truck. Don't know thoughts or what have you, but I think it would be well worth getting on Purple Wave and get them out of our inventory. The Ford has a blown motor and the Sterling, you don't know if it's gonna run or not. We've had it serviced several times and quite a bit of money's been put into that truck, it's time to let it go, so.
I agree.
Whoever wants to make the motion, there's the info on it.
Make a motion to allow Public Works Director Bailey to post 2008 Sterling, model number AT-9500, and a 1996 Ford, model number F-8000, on Purple Wave auction.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, so you gonna replace the Sterling?
We already have with the Mack that we.
With that Mack as the replacement?
Yeah. I know that was for the other Mack, but at this time, we can look and see if something comes along.
So how we doing that transporter on the landfill?
As far as?
Is getting pulled out, are we doing all right?
That truck is, so far, I hope you didn't just jinx us here and have it.
Try not to.
Start having trouble, but so far, things are going well, and we've got the two Macks sitting there that we could pull it with if we had to, so.
And we're doing, we only have one belly dump, right?
One belly dump, yeah, so, five dump trucks.
Okay.
And you spent the insurance money on that Mack, probably?
Right.
Okay. Do you have any plans for any more dump trucks, or that you're?
We would like to have one more, I know it's been budgeted for the special bridge. So we're still looking, trying to find, we got a call on a Mack, used Mack truck the other day. He said he needed to send me some information, he called me back 10 minutes later and it had already sold, so. They're hard to find, year out, wait on new ones. Just, that's how the world is right now, so. But we keep looking, we're looking today, or looking every day, but hopefully something'll pop up and be worthwhile, but we do need to get a dump truck for our special.
How long did it take us to get that new one here?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what.
Now, what we found out in the past, Eric, is we started shopping out in the Dakotas and places like that, where the market wasn't real big, and we'd find a new one, been sitting there a year.
Okay.
You might get lucky again, you might not.
Might not, okay.
But.
You know, whether the used car or vehicle market is right now, you're not.
Yeah.
Very much ahead by getting a used one.
Used to new, that's what, and especially with the Sourcewell, remember that, so we get that government discount through that and it.
Yep.
That was kind of a little bit of a hiccup on the one that they said the other day, the amount they were asking compared to what we paid new was just pretty much right there, so.
Yeah, that government discount's pretty attractive.
Yes, yes it is.
You know, get the full five-year warranty and things like that, makes a big difference.
You bet it is.
Yeah.
Four-five years span for maintenance.
Right, right.
You know, that last one, Bob, we had in the shop a couple times under warranty.
Yes.
You know, it actually saved us some money until they got all the bugs worked out of it.
Yeah, get those pumps right.
You bet.
Do that, good.
I finally got them here last year, and we ran that truck that night, I didn't care how long it was gonna take, but we ran it till she finally acted up and it took about four hours or so and.
They replaced a valve?
It was something to do with the valve in the center console there, and they replaced that, and so far, we used it several more times after and didn't have an issue, and they replaced it on the other two trucks as well and didn't have an issue, so I believe we got that corrected now.
Good.
But anyhow, moving along, landfill on the 13 acres, I've gathered some information, I'm gathering a little bit more, I hope to have a recommendation to you next commission meeting on the 13 acres to the south of our existing, so kinda let you know there. And then windmills, received a phone call from Jeff Spangler, final erection is complete. They did the road crossing, final road crossing Saturday morning about seven, later that, or eight, somewhere near seven, eight, and then they done the highway that afternoon, right around noon, so the final road has been done on the road crossings and the top outs are done, so erections are complete in on the windmills, there's 70 total, 56 in Bourbon County and 14 in Crawford County. So now they start with reclamation or restoring back to original condition, and we will follow the road use agreement that's been put in place. Very, very good document to have, and they've been very good to work with and follow as well, the road use agreement, so.
Frank been a lot of help.
Frank has been help with us, he's helped us out on two or three different, or more than that, six, seven, eight different items, I mean, just little things that pop up, you know, and what have you. So we do have a bridge deck that when everything is completed, we'll go back and it come loose a little bit on one corner, which is not a hard fix at all, but I wanna wait till everything is complete and out of the area before we go back, it's no danger to traffic or anything, it's just something that we need to correct and make it right, and they're willing to pay for us to do that, so.
Good.
Again, been very good, the road use agreement's been outstanding, it's helped us out a bunch, so anyhow, that's kinda where we're at there. Any, anything for me?
You know, I've had a request a long time ago, over on Maple Road, at the intersection of 75th and Maple, on the southeast corner. They had asked if we'd go in and put some riprap in that ditch where it's, where it's deep.
Okay.
And it does have some erosion.
Okay.
Somebody might wanna take a look at it and see what you thought.
Yeah. We are hauling a little bit of riprap, I call it riprap, it's rock from out there at the windmill area that they busted up, it's been really good, clean, volleyball, basketball, softball, all those, I mean, it's just good stuff to line ditches and what have you with, so we're hauling a little bit of that to Union Town now for the, our portion of the grant project that they had or what have you, that you talked about way back in the day for the pond. So we're stockpiling it there, so that way, when they're ready to start their project, it's already there, we don't have to stop what we're doing and get that, so I got one truck doing that, so we'll look at going right on down the road there and see what we can do in that area, anything else?
Did we ever do anything with state line and zinc with the township, Missouri township?
State line and zinc on the culvert deal or what have you?
Yeah.
We met with that gentleman, actually, Dust and I met Friday, called in the locates, and there is a crossroad tube there that is in dire need of being replaced, and that is our little section that we get to take care of, so we, we're headed up there to get it done because Crock Hand's in the area putting fiber in, and we wanna get it done before the fiber goes in, and we have to deal with the fiber, so hopefully this week, I think the locates up tomorrow, so we can start digging tomorrow.
Yeah, I'd had a couple calls from him on that.
I've had conversation with him as well and it just, so.
Well, he's persistent, that's okay.
That's all right, that is all right, so, but we did meet face to face with him Friday, so.
So I have one from Joe George.
Okay.
It's up on, I think, 75th and, it's probably Quail. He was talking, he didn't really give me a specific location, but his number is 620-724-2720, had a culvert that needed cleaned out.
Culvert, okay, I'll give him a call. Anything else?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Good, all right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Yep.
Susan, morning. Thank you, ma'am.
So we finally got the sewer agreement for the District Number One, the Lake Sewer Residence, and the main changes that have happened in this agreement is under section Non-Residential Users, and it talks about if we have, after going forward, if we have any commercial or industrial user adding to the system, how we will handle them. And how we've been handling St. Martin's is we actually meter the sewage coming out, they have a lift station and we're able to capture the hours, and then we convert that into usage, and then we charge them based on that, because they do a lot of extra, like watering their animals and things like that, and some of that that comes into the, we didn't want to capture that watering, so we thought that the best thing to do is to look at the lift station that's out there, and so that's been working out very well. But like any other, they will be outside, moving forward, anybody that signs on that's not in the district, which is really just your lake residence and St. Martin's right now, if they're not in that district, then they'll pay time and a half for sewer service, and then they will have to pay a $2,000 hookup fee, and that hookup fee is for all the materials that the city would have to provide to let them tap into our sewer main, as well as a $150 deposit like we would do with normal customers. So I feel like we've come to a reasonable accommodation on this, trying to think if there's anything else in this agreement, Justin, can you think of anything else that's really major that has changed? Any questions?
In this literature, we're the district?
You are the district.
We are the district.
And so anytime there's major changes that happen within the district, you guys are the ones that make all those treatments, but as far as the lines and the maintenance of that, the city has taken on that, and so they maintain that, but if there's anything major like this, this is kinda outside the scope. We do have two users that, in the middle of all this trying to get this agreement together, they had been told that there would not be a hookup fee when they hooked in too, so that's something we need to discuss, we kinda feel like they're grandfathered in because we hadn't finalized this, this agreement, but that is totally up to the district and how they want to handle that.
The city maintaining this line, is it in this agreement or a separate agreement?
Oh, this agreement.
It's in here.
Okay, I just didn't, I wouldn't know where the whole time.
Yep.
The district itself has very little.
Yeah.
Authority in this thing.
Yeah.
Almost just a patch or.
You really kinda, yeah, you kinda built it and moved on to us. So, we're just asking for this agreement to be approved, it's also going to the City Commission tonight, and if you wanna wait a week to get it approved, that's totally fine, so have some time to look it over.
Gentlemen, it doesn't make any difference, we've been working on this for a long time.
Think we should go with it?
I do too. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to Pat Law, let's see, I guess we all have to sign it, to sign the sewer service agreement. Do you need to read much of this, or is that good enough?
We need a resolution. I think so, I think it's contract.
Yeah, we don't have much power, so.
So, be disagreeing, made it on, made this day, which is the 16th?
Well, that's, yeah, the 16th of November 2021, I guess here, by the City of Fort Scott, Kansas Municipal Corporation, here and after called the City and Sewer District Number One, Lake Fort Scott, Auburn County, Kansas, a quasi municipal corporation called the District.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One more real quick announcement, I forgot to say a while ago, the bridge on 7 and 39, just to the west of the junction there, I did receive word back from KDOT, they're having trouble with asphalt, they required their contractor to come back in and mill it off and relay a layer of asphalt, it has been milled off and they hope to have the asphalt laid and the bridge opened up by the end of next week, so.
I've had a few calls.
Yeah, so I just wanted to let that.
So are they still bypassing, still going around the barricades?
I'm not gonna answer that, yeah, I think so, so anyhow.
Well, I see people going that direction, never coming back.
Right, anyhow, that's kinda where.
They don't come back, they never come back, so.
Hey, Eric, that's Shane for the agenda.
Let me, the district inspector, Justin, is the district inspector gonna be environmental, right?
Say that one more time.
This district inspector is our environmental group?
Yeah, I mean, that's whatever statute we have with Prazer's Office.
So it's the Prazer's Office?
Because it's asking for a name, so.
Yeah, it's the Prazer's Office, that's our sanitary, used to be Eric, but we've moved that over to them.
That changes, over to you.
How are you, Larry, how are you?
Good, giving everybody a good sit.
Okay, right in the middle of football, of course.
Hate to see them out every night.
Yeah.
All right.
Hate to see it.
Thank you.
Wrestling is good, though. Wrestling is good.
There you go, Jim.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, Luke really looked forward, right?
Yeah, really did.
But.
Did he get feeling better all the?
Yes, he did, but you know, I hate to say it, it was kinda good for him digging, he got down to 266, so he was worried about making that 285 cutoff, him having that, some kind of virus, it wasn't COVID, but he lost some weight. Yeah, he was sick, but he'd ready for wrestling now.
Started last night, this night?
Yeah.
Thank you. I wanna maybe copy that and give the shit ass.
That flea stuff off.
Huh?
One of that flea stuff.
Oh, I.
$425.
Yeah, when you were doing that, I'm like, mm.
I didn't have a choice.
I know, I know.
It worked, but.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, I'm like, oof.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've done that, on five dogs.
Yeah.
Fall over.
Wasn't good.
But it does work.
Yeah, yeah. I had flea problems with one of my dogs yesterday. I'd do them all.
Sure.
I've never had that problem before, but.
What'd you treat them with?
Some pill, they're going to get me, and then.
Preventives, what I use.
Gets in the blood, and then the flea bites them, the flea dies, but.
It's not cheap.
No.
Those pills aren't cheap.
No.
No, they're not cheap, it takes a, costs about $400 every time I treat mine.
Yeah, that's what I got me, yes. Anyway.
All right, you ready? All righty, next up is the 30-30 presentation.
We'll have copies of all of our presentation for you at the end, so you'll have that.
Good morning, I'm Debbie Martin, and I'll be, and I'm lecturer at church, sorry about that. I'm a lifelong resident of Bourbon County, thank you for the opportunity to address this commission on our concern of the 30-by-30 executive order and the Freedom Frontier National Heritage Area, which encompasses 41 counties along the Kansas and Missouri border. We have three other people on to speak and would appreciate your questions at the end of our presentation, thank you. As you know, our business, Fort Scott Livestock Market, hosted an informational meeting on this topic, this program was very well attended by probably 100 to 125 citizens of not just Bourbon County, but surrounding Kansas and Missouri. People see that our federal government is on a power trip, they use doublespeak and terms that seem to make it sound so innocent, like why would anyone be against preserving history, heritage, et cetera, we are not against these things. Our concern is the government not pinpointing a certain designated area by putting themselves in a position to take it all, for any reason, any time, and the bureaucracy that goes with it. What about the unelected committees, boards, and political appointments favors made by the Department of Interior who will answer to no one? We know the goal of the government is to control private property and still make us pay for it through high taxes and regulation. Private property has made this country what it is, as we see the advances made through investments in conservation and common sense agricultural practices many property owners live by. Our government seems to be on a mission to take out agriculture as we know it on many fronts. As an example, the cattle industry seems to be blamed for everything, funny how that works, that the cowboy that wears many hats just can't seem to do anything right when they feed the world and make pennies for their hard work. What will become of our communities if the farmer, rancher, loses his land to the government to establish another untaxed park, historical area, walking trail, or tourist area? We can't live on tourism, as nice as that would be, it just won't work in the long term. What happens to our local budgets when you take this land out of taxes that the private owner is paying? Our local county commissioners have a huge responsibility to protect the citizens of their county against a greedy federal government that only cares about making themselves more powerful. I ask you to please be our firewall and do not sell us out to these empty promises, thank you.
Hi, I'm Sparky Schroder, lived in Bourbon County now for about 16 years. I'm gonna talk a little bit about Freedom Frontier Area, first, we are not against government programs, permanent easements, historical sites, soil conservation, and the like, they should be looked at on a one-to-one basis with local government input when it contains taxes. This is about boundaries, there's 41 counties in the Freedom Frontier Area, not just in Kansas, also in Missouri, to put this in perspective, it's about the size of Indiana, which is hard to believe, but it is. Freedom Frontier Area sets federal borders and jurisdiction. This is about property rights. At our meeting in August of 100, 125 people, I asked how many people knew that they were in a Freedom Frontier Area, and nobody knew it, and nobody was asked. When the Freedom Frontier Area was created in 2006, people were not notified or given a choice to belong. When you go to their website, they say they never interfere with landowners and their rights, it's all volunteer, but this is not true, no one was given the choice. This starts when they come in and want county and cities to combine and do a comprehensive plan and go into one government, then they'll want zoning, and they'll help you with the zoning, they'll bring somebody in from outside to help you with it if you want to. Why this, this is bad, zoning can be used to change the use of property and can take away from the landowner, owner's rights to use the land as they intend. Zoning might not be bad if it is done right, done local, by local people, and should be separate from the city. You say this can't happen, well, let me tell you a quick story, this is how Angel Cushing got involved, this happened in Lion County, Kansas, they started with combined city and county government, then they would help with the zoning, an outside company was hired to put in the zoning, they would, they had put in the zoning to ban barbed wire and electric fence in the county, this would eliminate livestock in the county, Lions County is a cattle county. Come to find out, the company that put the zoning together were cricket farmers, and they believed that our protein should be coming from crickets. Angel and her husband spent over $20,000 to fight this, so far, they've been able to keep the ban of barbed wire and electric wire out of the ordinance, but the threat is still there. They're not in the National Heritage Area, but when researching their comprehensive plan, found the plans were exactly like a National Heritage Area. Do you know that Freedom Frontier Area Management Plan has over 500 pages, and all it talks about is land preservation and recreation? This is the same wording as in the 30-30 land grab, they're telling us that we do not know how to take care of our land. If you go to their web. If you go to their website and do some research and start downloading too much information, they will lock you out of their website and you can't get back in. This has happened to two or three people that I have talked to. Why do they, why do they, what would they do if they weren't protecting private property? Why would they lock you out? They use colleges to do all kinds of studies and mapping because most people won't say no to college students. This is how they get a foothold. If you're in a permanent easement, this is like mineral rights. They, it can be traded. Right now, Congress has to vote on all national heritage areas, new and existing. There are fifty-five areas across thirty-four states and twenty-nine get voted on this year. Right now, there's a bill before Congress to take the power away from Congress and give it to the Department of Interior. If this happens, this will be really bad because all the power will be given to one individual. This is why we need your help to protect landowners. Right now, they get their funding from the federal government and private donations and grants, some of which comes from over, from all over the world. By law, they're supposed to be self-sufficient within fifteen years from the start or the funding stops. This year is the fifteenth year and they're trying to get Congress to extend it. Right now, most of the money in the Freedom Frontier Area is being spent in one county. That is Douglas County. Also, you cannot submit a Freedom of Information Act to see the funding received and spent being a nonprofit. Permanent effect, permanent easements affect all of us and U.S. Commissioners. Every parcel that is put in a permanent easement, that property has reduced taxes. We all have to pay more and U.S. Commissioners will have to deal with less tax revenue. We are not saying permanent easements are bad, just want the control to be landowner and local government. They're trying to start a new area in north central and south, Kansas and south central Nebraska. There is about forty-nine proposed counties and forty-four of the forty-nine have already opted out of the Nebraska-Kansas National Heritage Area. This shows the opposition against federal control. There are three or four counties in Freedom Frontier Area that have already opted out. You are, you are our last line of defense. We ask you to opt out and protect our property rights. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning. I am Donna Banwart and I am a Bourbon County resident. And I want to continue this discussion today to summarize the Thirty by Thirty Land Grab legislation that seeks to control thirty percent of America's lands and oceans by two thousand and thirty. We believe the heritage area, as discussed by Sparky, could be used as a vehicle to facilitate the land grab Thirty by Thirty transfer of land to the Park Service. Additionally, it doesn't seem that all the stories regarding these topics produce a set of facts that can be trusted. Let me give you some background regarding the Thirty by Thirty legislation. The program was adopted by the Biden administration on January twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-one through Executive Order fourteen zero zero eight, tackling the climate crisis at home and abroad. It is not hard to understand that this Thirty by Thirty is an unconstitutional policy shift, moving us from a nation founded on private property principles to one controlled by the administrative state. I am sure you are aware that the proponents argue that climate impacts are human caused and therefore it is necessary for the government to control thirty percent of America's lands and oceans to reverse climate change. However, the science and data do not justify these extreme policy measures. Also, remember the advocates of this cause are those that live in big cities and have no idea what is it is like to have the freedoms inherent to the wide open spaces we all love and appreciate. Landowners in Bourbon County have always been good stewards of our land. Kansas landowners provide the best habitat for species and wildlife while producing the necessary food, fiber, minerals, and energy we depend on to create wealth, defend our liberties, and mostly live free. With this short description, you now understand the impact this legislation could have on our landowners in Bourbon County. It could potentially strip us of our rights to decide how to use the land that we have worked hard to own and operate. It could greatly diminish the ability and rights to make a living off of our land. Therefore, we are requesting and strongly urging the commissioners to sign resolutions opposing the blanket National Heritage Area designation and the proposed Thirty by Thirty Land Grab. The resolutions only provide a layer of defense for the Bourbon County landowners. The many advantages of passing these resolutions include it helps protect the landowners that are not aware of how this type of legislation impacts the ownership of their land. Private property owners have never been notified that Bourbon County has been designated as a National Heritage Area and many have never heard of the Thirty by Thirty Land Grab. Number two, it shows your support for the agricultural base in Bourbon County and the landowner working hard to support their families. It also keeps the land as private property, which keeps the tax base and spending of monies earned from the land in Bourbon County. Number four, it sends a clear message to the federal government that Bourbon County supports the freedom to own land and use that land freely. Finally, it will help support our elected representatives as they take a stand against the program. Both Senator Moran and Senator Marshall have proposed legislation terminating the Thirty by Thirty Land Grab. I must emphasize that there is no downside in passing and signing these resolutions we are recommending. Again, it is just the first line of defense that Bourbon County landowners can use to protect the ownership of their property. I now turn the presentation over to Ann Dare as she discusses the resolutions we have determined to be best through our many hours of research and discussion with other Kansans. Hopefully, we have taken the work off your plate so both resolutions can be signed in an expedited manner. Thank you.
Good morning, guys.
Morning.
Oh, yeah. My name is Ann Dare. I live in Bourbon County. Several months ago, during a presentation on what zoning might look like for our county, I could hold my peace no longer and asked if I brought something that would protect the private property rights of landowners, would you consider it? As I remember, you all answered yes. So here we are. I have attempted today to paint you a picture of the need for such a resolution. A word used on occasion by the county councilor is foreseeability. It is sad that in this day and age, we have to be seers into the future to try and determine what our government and others could possibly do to us that we could, would need protection from. I present before you two resolutions, both of which would protect the private property rights of our citizens in the event our government would want to tell our farmers and ranchers how our land should be used. In the end, our current administration may not hear our voices and do as they wish anyway. However, these documents would stand as a written testimony to our objections of placing our land into a designation that could possibly lead to a government land grab and taken out of our control. For an overview of the National Heritage Area, we oppose blanket designations that put dissenting private landowners in the unreasonable position of having to opt out of federally mandated boundaries. We oppose interference by special interest groups that do not have the historical perspective or deeply felt stewardship responsibility of owners who have worked the land over several generations. A fundamental interdependence exists between individual liberty and the ability to own property. We are very concerned that a National Heritage Area would deprive landowners of their ability to use and enjoy their property as they see fit. We would therefore ask that it be resolved that Bourbon County oppose any National Heritage Area designation for the state of Kansas. It does not wish to confer upon an unelected regional management entity the ability to establish land use policy within the boundaries of Bourbon County. The Thirty by Thirty overview, resolution overview. Thirty by Thirty refers to permanently locking up thirty percent of the earth's land and water by two thousand and thirty. Executive Order fourteen zero zero eight is silent about what conservation means, nor does it state where the thirty percent is coming from. The administration has not provided a scientific basis for why thirty percent of the earth's landmass needs to be permanently protected, nor have they answered that doing so will cure the perceived immediate climate crisis. Fifteen governors and sixteen members of Congress are still waiting for a response to letters sent in March and April of two thousand and twenty-one opposing Thirty by Thirty. The executive order cites no constitutional, statutory, or other lawful authority of the president to dictate Thirty by Thirty. Thirty by Thirty is to be a local initiative. It is not. It began as a global half-earth proposal. We believe that Thirty by Thirty is contrary to the rights, interests, history, heritage, way of life, children and grandchildren of Bourbon County citizens, and to the interests of Bourbon County's local government. We believe that ranchers and farmers have always been the better stewards of their own land and that government-managed land is the most poorly managed land. Clay, Coffey, Lynn, Osage, and Anderson Counties are the five counties in the Freedoms Frontier National Heritage Area that have already signed Thirty by Thirty and National Heritage Area Opposition Resolutions. We would respectfully ask that upon your review, that at next week's meeting, you would approve and sign these resolutions in order to ensure this commission's support of the private property rights of those in Bourbon County.
Excuse me. I'm not on the agenda. May I make a comment about Thirty by Thirty? I'm, I'm one of your constituents, Mr. O'Hara. My name is Sarah Classen. Thank you. I'll be very brief.
Like I said, I'm not on the agenda. I'll be very brief. I'm one of Mr. O'Hara's constituents. My name is Sarah Classen and my husband and I live on Overrick Road and I'm probably the newest landowner here. We, about a year ago, bought all of slightly less than two acres from my in-laws who own about forty acres and we're on a little island in the middle of that and we're doing fine. However, since Ms. Martin mentioned the cowboy, I feel like I need to mention the Indian. I am a certified Cherokee Indian of the Cherokee Nation of Oklahoma. I'm proud to be here and be a Kansan. Been living here a couple of years. And I gotta say, I really appreciate that y'all can be a last defense for us for this Thirty by Thirty, but you can also be our ambassadors to this, these folks, this committee of folks up in this regional committee that's going to be making decisions without checking with us first. And Mr. O'Hara, I think I've talked to you about that before.
Yeah.
That there's a, you're our connection to that bureaucracy up there. Now, as an Indian, this has a smell of a dagum Trail of Tears about it. There's a squeeze happening here and I don't like it. And I've been doing my research too and I want to stand with these people and just say that it doesn't matter whether you have two acres, well, in our case, one point nine three, or whether you have four hundred. The squeeze is on and we really need your help with this. The Trail of Tears happened out in North Carolina and they thought it could never happen. And that's how you get it to happen. When you get all these big landowners and you got slave owners and you got non-slave owners and none of them thought it could happen to them, so they didn't stand together. And pretty soon they're all moving wests and they didn't want to be there. It didn't happen, it's like that old quote about this stuff that happens gradually and all of a sudden it happens suddenly. Well, that's how it was with the Trail of Tears and I'd appreciate it if y'all would stick together with us because I think it's, we all got to stand together or we all fall on this issue. I really appreciate the time to make a comment. I just want to let you know that everybody on Overbrook Road that we've talked to, family who own land out there, Ken and Holly Classen and all the other Classens had no idea this was going on and they were shocked to their core about this Thirty by Thirty. They never heard a word of it. So I would encourage y'all, please let everybody know that they, landowners can opt out. They do have the option to opt out, but it's complicated. And a lot of landowners don't know how to do it and I think that might be part of the plan. Now, we went through the complicated process to write letters and get opted out with the National Park Service Director and we also opted out with the National Heritage Program Director, Jim Ogle. It took some doing. So I, I'm concerned that people who do want to opt out and who have heard of it don't know how to even get started. We sent certified mail. It took us weeks to hear back and we were lucky to hear back. There are other landowners who never heard back and have done everything that they can do to opt out. And I just think that's plain wrong and I'd like to encourage everybody to please get the word out about opting out. And I hope that'll be part of your standing with us on this issue. You know, some folks don't even know how to send a certified letter, but you've got to when you're dealing with these folks. And that's how I'm going to opt out of the next Trail of Tears, but I want to let other people know how to do that too. I'm not saying we're at that stage yet, but we can stop it right now. Thank you very much. I'm not speaking on behalf of any other Indians or cowboys. Just this Indian and my husband, who couldn't be here today. He's out working and he thanks you as well as the newest and smallest landowners on Overbrook Road. We thank you very much.
I have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
I have a question, Ann. Just reading this last few weeks, I see a large difference between a Thirty Thirty and a National Heritage Group. Is it not really the same? Because what I read on the Heritage Group, in that public-private joint agreements, that Thirty Thirty is just a takeaway. So I, I don't, I don't understand why we're against the Heritage Group. I'm not saying I'm not, I just don't understand.
I understand. Oh, well, step one is that it was created in, in two thousand and six for our area and from what I understand, I, 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 sorry, I'll be all, a little all over the place, possibly. I spent several hours here in this room going over past minutes from two thousand and four to two, about two thousand and eight to find out if the org, the original organization came to a county commission meeting to let you all know what was happening. And I find nothing. I find no resolutions of support. I find no statements. You know, I can find all kinds of stuff. Different groups coming and, and letting them know what they're doing and what's going on. So right there, that's, that just speaks to, in, in, in my, in our opinion, that they possibly or apparently contacted one group in Fort Scott that said yes without really informing the rest of the population of Bourbon County and especially our large private property landowners. We have no problem with a Freedoms Frontier National Heritage Area. There are four entities in town that are included that, in that, the fort, Gordon Parks Museum, Lowell Milken Center, and then our national cemetery. If those entities want to be a part and take part in the National Heritage Area and, and proclaim that and be partners, and they are, then that's fine and dandy. Why do they need all of western Bourbon County and everything outside? Why, why do they need to include that? Well, they need to include that, include the whole county in order to have leverage at a congressional level when they're lobbying for money. So where we get to that is, to the Thirty by Thirty is that this is just one avenue that has opened a door, that has an open door, whether you want to admit it or not, an open door for, especially if, if Senate Bill nineteen forty-two passes and probably will, which, which gives all of the power over the Department of Interior to one man. You look at the Department of Interior and all that includes is scary. I mean, I didn't, I had no idea. But it, it gives the power to one person to dictate policy and to say what's going to happen. And if you are one in control of thirty percent of the land, where's the easiest place going to start? A place where there might already be boundaries and designations, whether they're prairie preserves or, or Tall Grass National Heritage Areas, historic sites and those kinds of things, they'll, they'll start there. And when you've included the whole rest of the county in that, the, the boundary's established, so, so they just would throw that in with claiming the Thirty by Thirty and in. And under that comes all kinds of, potentially, and I understand I had this arg, not argument, discussion with someone on Saturday, you know, real threat versus perceived threat. And we all carry insurance to guard against and that's what we're asking. We're not asking the county to remove themselves from the National Heritage Area. That, there again, that, that, that's a long and drawn-out process, but we are asking, have I answered your question?
Nope.
No, no.
Let me, let me ask a little something.
Okay.
If Larry was in agreement with the National Heritage Association, his ground, that's what I read, that's a joint agreement. Your concern is, since he had that agreement, Thirty Thirty would target him?
Yes.
What's the concern, what's the connection?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Yes. And, and then the lack of consent from landowners in the county to be placed in a federal designation. That never happened. And what, what, there again, what potentially could come of that? Again, well, why, why do we need to worry about it? It's been said a couple of times here. You all need to go to our state and federal legislators and, and talk to them. We have, but we're also finding that in this day and age, local. We have, but we're also finding that in this day and age, local grassroots organizations are becoming the movers and shakers to, for whatever cause. Anyway, so yes, the National Heritage Area is one avenue, the legislation is not just the executive order 14008, but the infrastructure bill that was just passed, and there are several others that have been recently passed, that all have portions of this. So even if Thirty by Thirty all of a sudden just disappeared, they have already placed policy in other pieces of legislation in order to go about this. So I guess that's why we're asking that you oppose both, both things. And it's just an opposing, it's not, again, we would like, you know, hopefully maybe someday or what, not hopefully, hopefully we don't get there, but that if it does go further than this, the federal government actually coming to our doors and saying, we're gonna take it, we're gonna say no, our county, it carries a little weight, may not carry much, but it carries a little weight to how the county felt about these things.
When I asked that question, 'cause over the weekend, I got six calls, once it's hit the agenda, setting they didn't support Thirty-Thirty, but they did support the National Heritage.
We support the National Heritage Areas, what we don't support is their tactics, and that's, that's, we support the National Heritage Area to a point. We do know that there have been three other entities, and they're national parks now, they started out as national heritage areas, and they turned them into national parks, and you know, when they do that, then that comes off the taxes.
And where was this located?
This is in Shenandoah River Valley region, and...
Is that, I don't know, is that Kansas?
That's in Virginia, that's in Virginia, it's in Virginia. Kane River, River Region area is in Louisiana, no, right, it's in Louisiana, and then the Black Stone, again, which is where?
Pennsylvania.
Pennsylvania, it's in Pennsylvania.
Do we know who owned that ground?
Who, who, what?
Who owned that ground previously, before they took it, or whatever you're saying?
Well, I would say local landowners.
You sure?
Well, yeah, no, I don't know, I don't...
Because it was in a National Heritage Area, and then they converted.
I mean, if you're talking about...
It would've had to start as private ownership.
Not necessarily, but, okay.
Is that a resolution?
I mean, just playing devil's advocate.
We're not against National Heritage, Jack, as long as they're targeted, boom, okay, Nash-De-Fort, okay, fine, we're great with that. We're great with Ford, we're great, but it needs to be targeted, not encompassing Bourbon County.
We're pushing the boundaries and borders, and if you go to their website, it actually states in there that it sets borders in federal jurisdiction, and that's what we're scared of, is, you know, yeah, if Larry wants to be in it, you wanna be in it, we don't have an issue, because we want to preserve history. Fort Scott is history.
Just playing devil's advocate, you say "they," who is "they"? It was actually George Bush, it wasn't "they" in Lawrence, and it was Donald Trump.
Hey, George Bush, they hear no more, we're dealing with COVID.
And it was Donald Trump, I know, but now we're saying that, I'm just playing devil's advocate, Larry, I mean, because this Angel Cushing lied to you, okay? Not everything she said was true at her meeting, and by the way, she said, called us idiots.
No, she wasn't calling you.
So, so I'm gonna play devil's advocate.
Okay, just a second, I wanna address one thing first. I went back through that tape, I sat for four hours, and I listened to it, and I played it back. She never once stated that the county commissioners here, or county commissioners in general, were stupid. What she, what, what was said was, when she was visiting with an attorney, the attorney said, "Well, they were stupid because they zoned it as a park." They zoned Lyon County as a park. Now, you don't have to pay taxes because it's a park. She did not call anybody stupid at all in there, and matter of fact, she made a point in there, and I'll sit down with her and play it through it again, if you'd like to. She made a point to, when you address the county commissioners, be courteous and respectful because they are your last line of defense. So, I just wanna, and I purposefully said...
After she said, "We don't know how to do our jobs."
I was there, I'm sorry, I don't remember that.
I went through it just because I heard that.
I'm just saying, she also said, she also said CRP will allow, I mean, she just said stuff that wasn't true, okay? So, I'm not arguing with you.
Right, we can't, we can't defend or whatever.
I'm just saying, so I just can't just blanket believe everything.
Oh, we don't, we've been...
We certainly don't.
And y'all have to too, because it is so extensive, but that is by plan. This, we know that's what our government has been doing to us. It just makes it so chaotic and so difficult that nobody wants to dig into it, because you've got a life to live and work to do, and you're just gonna say, hell with it, you know, just let them do it, they're gonna do it anyway. No, we're not gonna let them just do it.
So, part of this...
That's why we want our local people, you guys, to help us out.
Part of this National Heritage Area is Pike's Trail. And if you look, if you look at that area up in there, it's also in the Little Osage. Little Osage is nothing but Indian territory back, back in the day. There's nothing that could keep the Interior, Department of Interior, to come in and state and take that land and put it into a park today, because it's already well-defined, it's been defined for centuries.
Yeah, look what our government's doing.
And they can do it arbitrarily, do it.
Yeah.
So, your point, your point being, I...
My point being is, is we're gonna sign a resolution, and if we sign the resolution, what's gonna stop them from going ahead and doing it? They define their own areas. We see this all over the United States. They come in and designate national parks all the time and take more ground continually.
But there needs to be a time to say stop.
Well, it has to be on a national level.
Well, we might well not roll over on it.
Exactly, and I guess that's where our country is moving to, is that we're finding more and more local grassroots people wanting to understand, truly understand what is going on in our country, and wanting to stand up and have a voice. And you say that tomorrow they could, but you know, you know that tomorrow they cannot just designate a national park area, there is a lot of regulations. And so, I guess what is frustrating is that, again, having, having to guard against what might happen might sound foolish, but again, we all carry insurance of some type to guard against the future. And this may not be much, but it still gives the landowner something, hey, our county opposes this. That could probably be run over with a dump truck, you know, I...
But you've gotta start standing up at some, you know, and I don't think...
I'm not saying I don't, I oppose Thirty by Thirty. And I oppose the federal overreach, for sure, but I absolutely disagree with the resolutions I read from Angel Cushing. We are not going to become a combined city government here, we're not hiring some left-wing liberal to do our zoning.
You don't know that.
I know that, I know that, I'm here for another three and a half years, yeah, I know that. It's not gonna happen for three and a half years, but... Don't tell me I don't know that, I mean, four years from now, if I don't run or don't get elected, that's on somebody else.
But who else is gonna get elected?
But, okay, but here's the thing, they can certainly come in and override our resolution. Now, am I going, saying I'm not gonna sign this? I'm not saying that, I haven't read it yet.
I haven't either, all the way through. But you know my, you know my stance on property rights, my stance on property rights is, property owners, it's their land, and they can do what they want to with their land, and their rights overrule everything else. And I, and I told Justin when I looked at this, is I'm not opposed to a resolution that says, "We do not support the arbitrary taking of private land from private property owners from the federal government."
No, no, because these resolutions are not actually Ann Cushing's, if I'm, or Angel, I mean, these are from other counties.
Yeah, one, one we took from, one we took from Anderson County, and one we took from Lynn County.
Does the resolution is against the Thirty-Thirty, but once the resolution said National Heritage, is it, you're okay with it, as long as it meets these guidelines, or does this resolution say we're not supporting it?
Again, it depends on how you wanna interpret that. It's opposing, it's opposing, and it doesn't, you know, it's not saying, "We request the removal of Bourbon County from National Heritage Area." It doesn't say that, I don't, that'd take a whole nother set of lawyers to, if a county actually, it was done down in Arkansas, but it took years and it took money. So, no, that's not what we're, what we're asking, we're just asking, again, when I asked if I brought something that would protect the private property rights of owners, another layer of defense for them, would you look at it? So I respectfully ask that you look at it, you carefully consider it. Yeah, anybody else? Yes, ma'am?
I also wanna say that being abrasive to y'all would not accomplish anything, and anything abrasive that's been said is because people are scared. People are scared. And I bet anything abrasive they said, they regretted it, because this certainly isn't gonna get us all working together. Now, I'm not opposing anybody's behalf, but anything abrasive that's been said, just consider the source, consider, not one individual, consider the people who are sowing through this mess, who are in a bureaucratic mess, where, like I said, like trying to opt out alone. Took me hours to figure out how to do it, and I spent a whole day writing out letters and sending out certified mail and all that, because I'm a housewife, I had time to do it. I'm just saying that by, by editing a resolution according to what y'all think is right, you are letting people know about this when they don't know anything about it. It's a way to let little bitty people who might not have Wi-Fi at home, they don't spend all their time on Wi-Fi, maybe it's letting them know what's going on, and that is very valuable in and of itself.
And to me, the very fact that, that a farmer, or landowner, rancher, whoever, has to opt out, I just have a problem with any other conservation program, NRCS program, it's my responsibility to go and sign up for that program. Yeah, it's advertised, it's told about, we get mail about it and all that, but it's my responsibility, I give my express permission to be included in that program, and this was not done in this case. Again, can we reverse any National Heritage Area? It can be done. Are we going to do it? Probably not. So you say, well then, why do we need to sign, sign that? Because it lends support, county-wide support, to those counties that are now fighting this in north-central Kansas and southeast, southwest, south-central Nebraska. There, you know, anyway, okay. Anything else, guys?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much.
I need a five-minute break, I need a minute.
What's that?
I need a couple-minute break.
Sure, so, you guys wanna get this back on the agenda at a future date, so we can discuss it?
Yeah, a couple of weeks, yeah.
Give us time to review it.
Yeah, I'd like to really review it. I understand the Thirty-Thirty, but the Heritage, I need to study some more, but the Thirty-Thirty...
That's one thing we said when we started that meeting, please don't necessarily leave us, do your research, but like she said, it's tough to spend the time to do it.
I agree, thank you.
So, two weeks, put it on the agenda, two weeks. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. Couple-minute break, or...
Yeah, don't be a baby.
Go ahead, Mark.
You did fabulous, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, well, I just, Sparky just gave me a call yesterday morning, left me a message, and told me about the meeting, and I just got the details last night, so I'm sure that I was able to be here. I was gonna go help my husband with the project in Kansas City, but he decided that I could go by myself, so I'm sure glad.
Sorry, I blew up, I just...
How did you blow up?
I didn't see it, it was, we're good, we're good.
I sat there four hours, went through it, and she did not...
I don't remember it.
I was a dog, I don't remember it.
Busy, busy, haven't just...
Hey, if you can't, if you can't take me calling idiot out of the county commissioner, then you should be one.
Quite the learning curve, isn't it?
I mean, we're making call idiots, we just...
I just got with her, she, she came to the meeting, and we had a, yeah, you must meet her. Somebody was asking on stage...
Oh, good, I'm sure glad to hear that, I'm sure she also...
Yeah, I'm glad they let me sleep, I'm sure fired up. Did they have a waterfront list building or was banned by somebody?
There was one across in the main lobby.
Oh, yeah, where the...
They could tell you more off the cover.
Thank you.
You're back.
Yeah, thank you.
I was wondering where they were in 2006, when the pipelines went across Kansas and went into Texas, and they gave a ten-year abate in 2006. We lost a billion, a little estate, and they were baked, and they ended up...
When they come in, they put that one up there, in the corner?
There's a one over by, between Bronson and Water.
One on the corner, I heard.
Yeah, that, that one there, and the one over at the pier. Oh, no, both of those were not in Texas.
Oh, yeah, they did.
And now, ten years, they gave a ten-year abate, and we were the only one that didn't have it. Our legislators went to court to take it, they were gonna take a reversal of the thing because they knew they made a mistake, and the court said, no, that's barred, you're to listen. A billion-dollar board, Glenn.
Yeah, I hear ya.
Hi, Mr. O'Hara. Hi, I'm Sarah Klassen, you and I spoke on the phone, email a while back, how you doing? Nice to meet you face to face.
I just know the guy.
Well, I appreciate it. Actually, I had a question, it's not there, but I knew me and Ashley with the new gravel that's spread on Overbrook Road, do you know who I talked to about that, because it's been popping tires on Overbrook Road.
I did, you remember?
Yeah, would you mind?
No, not at all.
My aunt actually had a new tire destroyed the other night, because she says the new gravel went right through her tires. So she wanted to talk to somebody about it, she's...
You have a cell phone?
Yeah, I sure do, thank you.
What's your number?
It is Sarah Klassen, that's area code 580, it's an old number.
Sure.
580-695-7636. And she would like to talk about it, because she went to Duracet, and Duracet, people said the gravel went right through that new tire and destroyed it, they just blew the heck up. So she doesn't know where to start, I can pass the...
Well, this'll be the person you start with.
Okay, right.
And he'll probably direct you to this lady right here, to file a claim.
Okay. Well, I don't know about that, she just wanted to complain, you know how it is, but, sure.
Okay, let's get over here and Eric Bailey.
Okay.
And how do you score?
I'm doing just fine, thank you, sir. Second highest number, 620.
Okay.
215.
215.
5183.
5183, okay, 215, 5183, is he the gentleman who's talking here?
Yes.
Is the road's owner his man? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, he'll, he'll pay attention to you.
Okay.
He's good.
Thank you. Well, she said something about that darned three-inch gravel, and I just wanted to follow up on that. Well, I'm sorry, what's his last name?
Bailey.
Bailey, okay, great. All right, roads and bridges, thank you. We sure appreciate all the grading y'all are doing on Overbrook Road, we have a grader out there almost every week, which is...
Well, they're really trying.
They're trying, but...
Hey, there's your man right there.
Oh, okay, all right, he's like looking for an exit, thank you.
Seventy total, fifty-six fourteen, fifty-six of fourteen.
Hi, Mr. Bailey, hi, I'm Sarah Klassen, I live over on Overbrook Road. And I just wanna let you know, we really appreciate all the grading y'all, we obviously tell this lady about the grading and the roads tuned out on Overbrook Road, we live on 1800.
Okay.
And my aunt, last night, she was relatively new tire, and she says, the Duracet people at the auto shop, they told her that a three-inch gravel went right down, went right through her tire, and went right down, relatively new tire, it just went right through two of these in. And she wanted to meet a, well, I wanted to find out, you know, she doesn't know how to start, she's old, what to do, who to talk to about tires destroyed by gravel.
We need to get you a insurance claim.
Okay, okay, all right.
Actually, how do, we'll get you that for one minute, then I'll run out, take a look and see what we got going on.
Okay, yeah, thank you, thank you, it looks great, it's just the Duracet people, sure we're surprised.
Okay.
We got that old mow and ditch the other day. No, I actually weren't this fishing, it's too late, if you take them out after noon.
County Councilor. Morning. Morning, how are you, sir?
I'm good.
Nah, mine's easy. I need an executive session, but mine's easy.
Good. Good.
Can I have one of those?
Yep.
There is a bug going around, and I hope I'm not getting it.
Yep. Morning, Bill.
Morning.
Mr. Van, good morning.
Grabbing.
I'm not okay.
Always interesting.
Morning, Commissioners. I need an executive session to discuss non-elected identifiable individuals for performance issues. I need myself, the three Commissioners, and Susan, probably want to go for 10 minutes.
I might want to do 15.
We might want to do 15. I've just been told 15 minutes.
Make a motion to executive session, KSA 75-4319B1, to discuss personal matters of individual non-elected personnel to protect their privacy. We'll include the three Commissioners, Councillor Meeks, and Susan.
Right, and it's for job performance.
Job performance. 15 minutes. So, what would that be, 26?
Yep.
Turn at 10:26 in this room.
Second.
Any discussion? Home favor?
Ashley. Ashley. We pulled our government back in 2006, as they are now.
I second, so he wants to be a welder, but yet he's really good at track. He was the first mechanic with engineering graduate to the D C school of engineering.
Make the motion to, I already got it, Lynn.
Okay.
Make the motion to resume normal session at ten twenty six.
Your second.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
No, no action.
No action.
I do want to talk a little bit about kind of our unusualness, what's happening over the noon hour. There will be a non-disclosure agreement that I reviewed, that I will be suggesting that the commissioners sign. I'll sign it, and then I think anyone else that's invited from the county level will have to sign that. I don't think you'll be allowed in the meeting if you don't sign the non-disclosure agreement. Just to let you know, in public session, I have reviewed it, and it is, has some teeth to it. So we want to make sure that we keep that information confidential. The reason that we're leaving the county building is that we have had some problems in the past with information being overheard from this room and from the other room. We really don't have a secured facility big enough to make sure that we don't have anybody standing by the doorway or, you know, listening, you know. It, we had had that problem in my time as county councillor. So we're going to be going into an executive session. Basically, instead of using the room, we're going to walk across the street and use a secured facility that we know is going to be soundproof, and I will not have any information disseminated from that. Once that meeting's over with, I know there's going to be a public hearing where information can be disseminated, but it's a matter of how much they want to give out. I think you guys are going to get some information that maybe won't be disseminated initially. And there's some proprietary things at a high level that hopefully someday will get released, but at this point, that will not be let out in the public. So just letting you guys know that. And explaining that pre this, so that we know that that's what's happening.
I'm glad you have your smart shoes on, because that's where the bugs are.
So anyway, everything else on my end is progressing. We're still working on the tax sale. So I know there's a land bank meeting fairly shortly.
Today.
Today.
Five o'clock today.
Good. So we'll have some information hopefully by the end of that. I know the new, new city commissioners too are interested in the tax sale, so hopefully we can get it done sooner than later.
Thank you, Justin. All right. Susan.
I don't have anything to say.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
But come in.
I'd want. Really, I got to say that it's nice that the citizens are finally getting involved in government. It would have been nice to have it back in two thousand and six when they allowed the two pipelines go across Kansas, and we were the only state that never taxed them for ten years. And it only cost us a billion dollars in taxes. And that was a Canadian company, it wasn't an American company. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lynn. Anyone else?
Just wanted to bring something to the commission's attention. During the latest election, I think we had eleven percent participation, was what it came down to. Commonly known as the Garrison Apartments, you're all familiar with where that is, eighteenth and Horton, completely empty because it's now owned by the college and being renovated. We have one, over one hundred people registered to vote at that location. Here's a sample of the mailing cards. This is just a third of what I got back as undeliverable of people that were on our voter registration list and either, I had two separate stacks, one much smaller, that the time had expired to be forwarded, but they did have an address still here in, or in Nevada, things like that, where they had moved. I talked to Ashley about that, and she told me that the procedure was to wait for two presidential elections before we started purging or taking a look at that list. But at what point do we start taking a look at that list? What's the trigger for that list to start to be looked at? Now, I had all the sheets that had been provided.
Nope, nope, go ahead.
This is not bad about you at all.
I'm just going to clarify the process.
Okay, okay. Well, then make sure I explain it properly, from what you told me. I had all of the sheets of the voter, registered voters of all designations, shall we say. So they weren't just Republicans, they weren't just Democrats, Libertarians or, or non, what's the term, unassigned.
Unassigned.
Yeah. And we had kind of a committee of several that went through those lists, found several that were deceased, found several that these folks knew they had moved away. Now, I have to take their word for it. Found several that, that, we eliminated the married couples because I was only going to send them one. But this is how many, this is just a third of the ones I've got back as undeliverable, and it doesn't, it doesn't even say that there is a forwarding available. At some point, we should get to the point where that time, if it's two presidential elections, that's, that's ten years, basically, that we're waiting with people that have moved away, not died, maybe voting somewhere else, maybe shouldn't be voting somewhere else, that should be taken off the list. Thank you.
So the process for, we actually get a list from the state every year. And Reta works those, they send us a list, we send out blue cards that ask them to verify their address. Sometimes we get them back, sometimes they're undeliverable. We can't do anything with them unless we have documentation from them or they have not voted in any election for two presidential general cycles. If they're deceased, we have to have some sort of notification. If Reta knows someone's been deceased and it hasn't been in the newspaper, she'll a lot of times look online to try and find documentation, because when we do that in the system, we have to put that there's some sort of documentation. She has obituaries clipped out of paper, she has to have something to scan in the system to the state as to why she's doing that. So we do work those every year, we get a list from the state, we send out cards, we get a stack way bigger than that back.
I'll give you this one.
But that is, unfortunately, if they, if they, it hasn't been that length of time, we still can't do anything with it.
Anyone else? Okay.
I've already got one water bill.
What's that?
I said I got one water bill. I've turned it over to Susan.
Cool. All right, elected official comments. Commissioners.
I'd like to follow up in this, Susan, of course, we talked about the longevity pay. We really don't, Lynn didn't remember budgeting it for this year, and I remember, I thought we budgeted, so we need to look for you, make, we did, I thought so, yes.
You know, there was some discussion around, since we're doing three percent, do we need a longevity? So I didn't really remember whether or not we got it included.
We kept it in there.
Good, thank you. So that answers everyone's question, they're going to have a little better Christmas. Thank you, thank you very much, that's all I have.
All right, Cliff, do you have anything?
No, I'm going to sit here and read through these.
I don't worry.
Oh yeah, minutes, we got to do that.
Minutes.
I'd make a motion to.
I do have a comment, I apologize for being out of line.
Your turn.
Go ahead, have permission to.
Your turn.
Something I just thought of, it was been talked about or disguised that elected officials and the department heads will be responsible for their own budget, figuring out the salaries, the benefits, and everything else that goes along with that, is that correct? So my question, is there a software that either the clerk's office uses to figure that information out? Or is it just pencil and paper, and let's hope that the calculator actually works properly and the battery is fully charged? Because of course, the software that we use, or that the county use, my question is, is the elected official or department heads going to be able to have access to that software to figure out the salaries, the taxes, the health benefits, and everything else to make sure that we actually get a true.
Go ahead, Susan, Susan is, our finance director is, is in charge of that part of it.
Excel is my friend, that's how I do it. We can get the information from Ashley, get the Reta pay, and then from there, you can get rates for FICA unemployment, all of that can be provided. And health benefits is tricky, because when you're in the middle of the budget, that, that information can change from year to year, so you have to cushion it, is what I would say, because you may have somebody move from a single plan to a family plan. And so therefore, that could affect your, your end of year budget. That's all information that we can provide, but we do not have a software that, that does that for us.
So would Ashley be the one to let us know if somebody went from a single plan to a family, or is that something that we had to ask for?
Actually, Courtney will be the new person on that, but yes, we can provide that to you.
So you said that you're using, go ahead, Ashley, I apologize.
The tricky thing with insurance, and I am new to the budgeting process myself, so we have open enrollment in October, you do your budget before then, so you're not going to know if someone's changed when you do your budget. So the best thing I could think of is to budget everyone at a family plan, and then that would be your cushion, because that would be the most you would have to. I don't know if that's the best way to do it, but, because when you do your budget, you're not going to have that information, they could change after you have your budget approved.
And you can generally identify if somebody's single, you know, you know they're probably going to have a single plan. Some of the, I think that's, that's something that I can work with you all. We are going to have to do, for this year, it's got to stay where it's at. But starting in January of next year, we plan to move all the benefits that are in the benefit fund will be, actually be moved over to your budget. So there'll have to be a budget amendment done to increase for those benefits that are going to now be housed in your, your budget.
Well, that monthly report we normally get has it broken down by department on, on the benefits.
Yeah, but internally in the system, Ashley and I've got a lot of work to do.
Right.
Yep.
So my question, then I have another question at the back. You said that Excel is your friend, I understand that, Excel is a great software program, but Microsoft, but prior to the Excel worksheet, how did the county figure it before? Was there a software, was it C I C?
An auditor.
Company was, that actually.
We pulled, we pulled it off our reports.
Yep. Pulled it off reports, I mean, you can get a general idea.
We had a monthly report.
But you put the input into that software, that's what I'm saying, prior to the Excel, what system were we using to figure that, figure that out? Was it C I C, was it?
The only thing that's probably going to change is, is, is your health insurance is the most if you have somebody going to a family plan. But we get those figures every, well, normally, we get those figures every month on the employee benefits.
So there's not sort of, I don't put in, you know, so many hours at a pay rate of X, and then here's the state tax X.
No.
Here's FICA that's X, here's so on and so forth. You put in the software, there was nothing that the county did prior to that.
Nope.
So there's no software out there that would be able to take that to.
Well, it's.
To double check the elected officials and the directors to make sure that we're going down.
It's, it's going to be, it's going to be in manual process for a while until we get it figured out, because let's say, the amount of overtime you have is going to change the amount of taxes that's going to be withheld, amount of, of savings that's going to be withheld. So we, we've got, that has to be something that, that's looked at on, on a, on a payroll by payroll basis, and it should be on an Excel spreadsheet, because we have to, we have to take those things out every payday.
Do you make modifications through a software that's designed to handle this? If you just like turbo tax when you, in your, in your income taxes, you just plug in the numbers and it gives you whatever? That's just an example, but I just wanted to figure out how, if, since it's going to be supposedly bounced back to the elected official and the directors to be in charge of all that stuff, just more responsibility on those department heads and those directors or elected officials to make sure that we're able to also supervise our personnel while we're out on the road. So I'm just going out after one, know if there's a software, if there was, what was the cost, and how was it going to be?
Isn't that what you wanted, was to be able to control all of your, your pay increases?
Oh yeah, I want to make sure that I have a true number, and that really have a software that I can print at that, like I explained earlier.
There's really nothing like that, but I'd be more than happy to work with you to make sure that numbers are correct.
So I'll just sign up for how.
Okay. Anything else, guys?
No.
So let's take a break until noon, and come back a little bit before noon, and.
Here or over there?
Right here.
Okay.
And we can, we can go to the executive session from here.
Which we, I think, so people know, is going to be approximately one hour.
Yeah, it'll be one hour, one hour and maybe ten minutes, the most.
We can convene.
Probably an hour.
Around one o'clock.
I'd say if you're going, to be back here at one.
Okay.
If you want to hear what they have to say.
Okay.
They don't, they don't want back at all.
Be nice.
I'm in today, sorry, if you don't want to hear what they have to say.
That's a nice guy, Rob.
I know, you know, I've been, it's been a week.
So we'll be back here eleven fifty five, make the motion and leave the executive session. Okay.
All right.
This little man, I'm going to run somewhere, get a little quick lunch.
He's over there making the motion.
They're going to.
No, we got to.
Are we going to have a? That's all right. You know, I don't miss a lot of mailers.
Well, that's all. We have to have, once they come over, they're going to ask us, so the city's here, they're having a.
How's your dog's form better? Have a big ass there or something?
They don't.
It's bigger, bigger.
You said that we didn't.
Yeah.
Wow.
I'm going to work. We'll cross the issue, because sometimes we talk.
More interested in where we're located here.
Yeah.
Touch us off. We pause this thing?
When you get our, you get all our coaching problems figured out? You get all of our coaching problems figured out?
Got a minute?
Let's see. Ready, set, go.
Pretty good.
Yeah, it's just right. He's done, since he's set.
Yeah, sure.
You just got to figure out in your diplomatic way to get that done.
We'll walk there, down, turn on that, my speaker's on, I have questions.
Let me ask. Bates.
Is with.
What is this? Commission interference?
Don't be legal now.